I'd like to call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
America and Peter Republicans stands for nation, individual with liberty and justice.
Roll call, Mr. McCoslin.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mrs. Ruhl.
Mrs. Ruhl?
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Present.
Mr. Modra.
Here.
Mr. Nagel.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza.
Present.
Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mrs. Dobus.
Here.
All nine members present.
Okay, I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda for business items.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Nagel and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Could you open the voting, please, Mr. McCoslin?
Voting is open. Mr. Motion.
Thank you. Dr. Gempirio?
Thank you, Mrs. Dobus. We do have a superintendent's report this evening. We believe it's very important, needless to say, to update our constituency, to update our parents, and just all the plans that the district is making to move forward with our educational programs. We have four areas that we'd like to briefly discuss this evening to assure the public that we've been working very hard, very diligently, very tirelessly to come up with a plan that serves the children and serves the parents and the constituents of the Bethel Park School District. Mr. Fierst is our Director of Building and Grounds. Could you tell us and share with the public the care and preparation of the building and our vehicles? Of course, we're pretty much specifically referring to our buses.
Mr. Fierst, could you come up? Where's the camera, Mr. Brier? Up here? So if you would come up and address the exit sign, please.
Sure, sure thing. What I mostly want to touch on is we have four Hilliard products that are all EPA-registered. They are all certified to kill the coronavirus. And we have one other disinfectant that, it's not a Hilliard product, but it's used everywhere. It's used in other districts. It's called Vital Oxide. It is also very effective against the coronavirus. And we have another chemical we use called PreventX 24/7. It is not a disinfectant, and it's not to be used as a disinfectant, but it is used as a secondary safety precaution that is applied to all hard surfaces throughout the district, which is just used kind of by time throughout any kind of germs that come in contact with it throughout the day before we can get to it for our regular daily disinfection. And I want to focus on the fact that disinfection will be our main priority. There's a little bit of a difference between disinfection and cleaning. Disinfection might leave behind a smudge here, a smudge there. A board might not get wiped down that night, or a whiteboard, but everyone needs to know that the room will be sanitized and healthy for the next day. And in order to prove that, there will be little pieces of paper left behind by our custodial staff that verify that they were in the classroom, that they have disinfected the classroom, and everything is safe for the next day. Also, it's come to my attention that there's been some districts that have had other issues with water, such as Legionella breakout or Legionnaires' disease. We have already treated our entire district for that particular issue. We don't, we never had any here, but we want to be on the safe side. Everything has been treated. And as far as the buses go, they are being disinfected at least twice a day, if not three times. And we have two special products that we're using to take care of that issue. Thank you.
Mr. Fierst, could you just explain the deep cleaning day a little bit?
Sure. The deep cleaning day will take place every Friday, and when we get into that, every room will normally receive 20 to 25 minutes of a deep clean. Every hard surface, every soft surface will be clean scrubbed, hard floors will be mopped, carpetage, which will get vacuumed every night, will continue to be vacuumed. Everything will receive much more detailed attention than it does during the regular school day.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Mr. Ron Brier. One, which you obviously, one of the hugest issues is our technology platform, our technology uses that seems to be the killer and skill many, many districts. We are working so hard to try and correct all of these issues and make it as user-friendly for the students as possible. You put that in mind, on updates on where we are with our technology. And I don't know if you want to come forward as well to be in front of the panel, probably for the rest of the day.
Good evening. So we continue to use Schoology as our platform of choice for remote instruction. We're getting better at that. We know that there have been bumps in that road, and there continue to be bumps, but I think we're getting quicker at solving the problems when they occur. We also have been working with teachers to try different technologies within their classroom to try to figure out what's going to work best for them to do hybrid virtual instruction. And so we've been placing some microphones in classrooms that we believe are going to help teachers be able to reach students when they're at home. And of course, the students that are in the class will be able to hear them anyway. And that process is going pretty well so far. We know there's a lot of work to do, and we know that October 5th is coming quickly. And we'll do the best job we can getting that in place so that everybody is ready to be able to participate, whether they're here or there. So we ask that you continue to email the Schoology support links on the Schoology FAQ page. We know that there was some turbulence last night when Microsoft went down globally that created a login issue for Schoology because we use Microsoft to log into Schoology. And that was not an overly long outage, but I know, understand it created a lot of problems. And we probably should have communicated sooner. We just didn't know really what was going on, and by the time we knew, the problem had been resolved by Microsoft. So that's where we're at with technology. Other questions, concerns from the board that you'd like me to touch on? Okay, well, very good. Thank you much.
Thank you. Well, and I know it's been both a rewarding and frustrating experience for you trying to solve problems during the week, in the weekends, over the weekends, but you're getting it done. We're so appreciative of all the work that you've done. Next, Dr. Gansanti is our Health and Safety Plan Director, and we want to update the public as kind of a culminating thing for this portion of our presentation, where we are with our Health and Safety Plan and adhering to the guidelines. And again, Dr. Gansanti, maybe you could come forward so that everyone can get a look at your presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Gempirio. Sorry, my back. First thing, when it comes to our plan, the guidelines presented as far as Allegheny Health, Allegheny Department of Health has to really do with where the levels are as far as positivity is concerned. Right now, we are still listed in the moderate range, even though Bethel Park itself is very, very low as far as positivity rate. We still have to follow the Allegheny County specifications with regard to the ranges. And once again, we're in moderate range. With that said, with moderate, you are only permitted to either be fully remote or be in a hybrid situation. So with our plan that you're going to hear soon from Dr. O'Rourke, we are looking at changing from full remote to, as you know, October 5th, and going to a hybrid situation. So checkbox number three is now going to be checked instead of checkbox four, once again, from full remote to hybrid. And once again, you'll hear more details about the specifics of that plan from Dr. O'Rourke. With that said, our ultimate goal is to get all the students back to school five days a week. And of course, we're coming into a situation where we have flu season showing up. So we're once again going to ask parents to please do your work and do your diligence as far as checking students' temperatures before sending them to school, as well as any symptoms that they may have. And unfortunately, COVID symptoms really look a lot like the flu. So if you have symptoms, we want students to remain at home. We do not want to send students home, and we are providing a remote environment. So students, if they're well enough to attend school, but they have symptoms, they could stay at home, and they can log in and join our classes. That's what you're going to hear about a little bit as we move forward. So with our rates, as we move towards opening school, our target date was January. We are going to move that date up to around November 9th, and all this is subject to change based upon the numbers. So even though we have a goal, the numbers are going to really dictate where we're going. And what's nice to know is with the remote environment, in any event, anytime during the year, if we have to close a school because of positivity tests or positive tests of COVID, students can go home, faculty can go home, and we can still learn and have school from a remote environment. Is that good? Is that, anything else you want me to cover?
Any questions for Dr. Gansanti?
I have a question of clarification. As we have been virtual for four weeks now, there are some families that had decided that they could do virtual at grandma's house that happened to be, you know, in Florida, or Georgia, or South Carolina, Alabama. Can we address those issues if they come back this week? What principals are supposed to do? And Mrs. Sundle, if you could chime in on that also?
Yeah. Mrs. Turner, that's a great point. We're relying on families to not only go through the checkpoints of, you know, do I have symptoms? Do I have a fever? We want that checked diligently every day before sending your child to school. If they have those symptoms, stay home. This also applies to travel. You certainly can go on and see the states that are listed as hot states. There's around 20 states that are states that if you travel to that area, you are required, when you come back, to quarantine for 14 days. So we ask you to be honest about your travels. We ask you to talk to your principal. We're also going to ask you, once school begins, to complete the family educational fill trip request form, and from there, you will need to disclose your location as far as your travel arrangements are. So honesty, being, and following the guidelines. We're all compelled to do that. As adults, we want our students to do the same. So thank you.
Just to ground upon that, absolutely, students are required by the school district, even though the state has left it sort of soft and is saying, we're recommending that you self-quarantine before a student returns to in-person learning. It's a mandatory 14-day quarantine.
Absolutely. I used the wrong word. Recommended, it's required, as well as masks and face coverings. And that's another piece that you will know, that once students come back on October 5th, they all must wear a face mask. Medical situations that are documented and provided through a proper channel, going through the principal, going through a 504, Chapter 15 agreement, the IEP team, all those things need to be put in place. Can't just show up with a note and expect to not have your mask on. All students and all adults in the building will be required. There are some exceptions. Once again, eating, drinking, whether you're eating in the cafeteria or in the classroom, you get to take your mask off because you can't consume without doing so, as well as there are times during the day that there can be up to a 10-minute break that students can take, and they have to be socially distant while taking that 10-minute break. They cannot be closer than six feet while they take their 10-minute break. The teachers will designate those time breaks throughout the school day. And of course, if you're running equipment or something that would be an issue about having a mask on, that too would be another reason. Okay?
I have another question.
Sure.
For clarification purposes, children in the classroom can wear a mask or a face shield. They do not have to have both on, correct?
Yeah, I'm going to clarify that. You are correct as far as a face covering goes. However, we are going to start with masks. We are going to ask everyone to wear a mask. In the situation that we can't, a child cannot wear a mask, certainly a fallback would be a face shield. So we are asking, because the CDC, as well as the FDA, has said that the mask is the most effective model, we are going to, out of an abundance of caution, we are going to go with the mask. We are going to ask students and staff to wear the mask. Once again, if you have an accommodation, we will honor that accommodation. And, you know, there'll be some students through an IP, through a Chapter 15 service agreement, might not be able to wear a mask, but might be able to wear a shield. And if they can't do either of those two, we'll make another accommodation with the teacher and the student in the room.
My question probably needs to also go to Dr. O'Rourke, and it might be coming up. But my question was because, as you learn phonics in kindergarten, first and second grade, wearing a mask, as we're being told here through Facebook, all of us sound muffled. They're having a hard time hearing us. So as we wear these masks, these children are, you know, going to sound muffled and going to sound different, and they need to get that phonics awareness and that repetition down for reading. So is there any way that we could make accommodations for kindergarten, first and second grade at this point in time with the shield, as long as they're seated in the classroom doing classroom work?
No doubt. And most of those activities will fall within the 10-minute range. So we can put, we can have the shield on, take the mask off, do the enunciation pieces required. The teacher will do the same because students might need to see the movement of the mouth. So those are good reasons that we would step aside and make those accommodations.
Okay, I just want clarification because everybody's on right now, and there's a lot of parents watching, just so everybody knows that that is allowed.
That's an excellent question. I appreciate you bringing that up. And Dr. Gansanti, you, I believe, would want to note also that the district has received a sufficient number of masks and shields to supply each student with that equipment as needed.
I'm sorry, I forgot that we did buy all that.
Doc, that's another great point, Dr. Gempirio. Certainly, students can bring their own mask. Where would they feel comfortable with? If they do not have a mask or a face shield, we have plenty. We will provide that for you. But once again, when you go to the bus stop, you get on the bus, you got to have a face covering on. So we will have, some of the drivers will have some extras as well. So if you have a student that doesn't have a face covering, we're going to try to accommodate that immediately, once a student is on their way to school. Obviously, we're going to have a lot of parents that are going to be doing drop-off as they, as they may feel more comfortable with driving their student to school, picking their student up. We ask that you work with your principal in that building to ensure that your pickup and drop-off coincides with their schedule that they're going to create. If they haven't already shared that, they will be sharing that very soon because, once again, we have schools start beginning on Monday.
So you're saying that the elementary principals will be notifying parents about safe pickup and drop-off plans for their particular school?
Absolutely. That's what we've asked them to do, and if they haven't already done that, it will happen within the next day or two.
Okay. Could you review also the cafeteria protocol for eating in the classroom and/or getting their lunches?
Sure. Once again, as far as the requirements for masks, wearing face coverings, one of the exceptions will be eating in the cafeteria. And a lot of the cafeterias, or all that will be using the cafeteria, they will be, students will be socially distant, six foot or further. And when we can't do that, we will couple that with utilizing the classroom. So in many buildings, it may be a combination of, hey, my students, they're consuming their food in the classroom. Another child in the same building may be in the cafeteria. So we have to make this all work. We hope that parents will understand. We're certainly not singling some kids out over others. It may be simply a schedule that we're trying to complete and put together.
Other questions for Dr. Gansanti about the safety plan?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Dr. Gansanti, principals will notify parents regards to the drop-off, pickup plans for each school, or is that coming out of the central office?
That is, the notification as far as parent drop-off will be coming from the individual principal home. So that's not a district message that'll be coming, because each area, each building has certain items germane to that school that they'll want to communicate. So we're leaving that up to the principals. We also believe that the principals should coordinate that anyway, as far as it's their building, they're in charge of that. They should run that part. And in so many parts of this that refer to the building, we have already contacted all of the building principals. Our plan is to meet with them the first thing tomorrow morning and review everything that has been presented this evening to make sure that they thoroughly understand everything that they need to do to get their building ready. I think for the most part, they are. And to each responsibility that we expect the building principals to undertake, to make sure that their building is as open, ready to go for Monday morning. One last thing, if you will, regarding communication. First of all, very pleased that Mr. Cromie's work thus far with, as far as communication goes, he will do the overarching communication that will go out to families. He's also putting together a spectacular video that will highlight some of the safety protocols that are in place that parents have questions about. Cafeteria, transportation, the cleaning. What else, Jim? We did air. People want to know, how's the air? How are we, how are we keeping air? Instead of air going from student to student, it's going to go upwards and out. So also, we have our health specialist, our school nurse is going to, once again, reiterate those facts about when your child doesn't feel well, when to keep them home, and when to send them back to school. So those are some of the pieces. Jim's putting together a terrific video that will, I think, will be great for parents to peruse and be able to see and hear those key points. Okay?
Any other questions for?
Yes, Dr. Gansanti, thank you. Is the social distancing with the size of the classes in the hybrid model, is the social distancing going to be maintained in the classrooms?
Our goal, that's another great question, as far as social distancing goes. With the hybrid model, we believe we'll be able to maintain that social distancing piece. Are there times that a student might get closer to another student? Absolutely. That's going to happen. But remember, exposure means closer than six feet for 15 minutes or longer. So we believe we'll be able to maintain that as we're in the hybrid. Now, if we go from moderate to low, then of course, we're going to stay within the requirements, and that might mean we can have more students in the building.
Other questions for Dr. Gansanti? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. O'Rourke and Ms. Wells? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Let me just say, before Dr. O'Rourke and Mrs. Wells started, this, their presentation is based on many hours and weeks of preparation for what the opening of school would look like. There are embedded in this a lot of legal implications. And so we'd like to thank, or I would certainly like to thank, on behalf of the board, our attorney, Mrs. Sundle. I'd like to thank the teachers for all of their contributions to this. In particular, Mr. Bill Wells and Mr. Tom Hare, and all those teachers that did contribute to the process. And now, finally, and particularly, I'd like to thank Dr. O'Rourke and Mrs. Wells, who really worked very tirelessly on putting this all together. So with that, Dr. O'Rourke, thank you so much.
Is this being shared on the screen of Facebook?
It is.
And you'll share it then also on our page?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to present a little bit about our next phase in our reopening plan. First and foremost, I think it's necessary for me to take a moment and thank all of the tireless work that our teachers and parents are doing as we go into the educational plan and continue the educational plan in such circumstances that we never expected to be in. I couldn't be prouder to be a part of a school district that continuously keeps students first, and we do everything tirelessly to get that started. With that being said, we're moving into the hybrid plan, as Dr. Gansanti had said. Our students will be divided into two groups, and they will attend on alternating days. Earlier, when Dr. Gansanti was talking, he talked about going from the moderate level to the low level and the fluidity of the programming that we are then offering. I did include the three links of where this information comes from. And when he talks about the moderate and low, the PDE COVID-19 resource page gets updated each Monday, and that basically gives us the guidance of where we stand educationally, of what opportunity we have to provide instruction in our school district. So when we talk about the hybrid plan or our plans moving forward, I think it's essential for us to have a common understanding of words that we're using, to make sure that we're all using those in the same manner, whether it be a learning management system or an LMS. You'll hear the teachers or the administrators, parents talking about to-distance learning, hybrid learning, synchronous, asynchronous, full in person. Those are all areas that we have become part of our everyday dialogue that it was never necessarily part of our vocabulary prior. And I think it's important for us to share that common understanding of what those words truly mean and what you can expect from the Bethel Park School District. Starting October 5th, as Dr. Gansanti has mentioned, we're going to the hybrid model. It's going to be a reopen for students, and we're so excited to be welcoming them back in Groups A and B. Those groups will be disseminated by the building principals within the day, and you'll be identified as Groups A and B. We did take care and consideration to make sure that we were grouping students in families on the same day. So if you had a secondary student, we were working with our elementary principals, if you had an elementary student as well, to be on the same day, or parents, extended families that live in the same household, maybe with different names, being in on the same day. So Group A will attend two days a week on Mondays and Wednesdays. Group B will attend two days a week on Thursdays and Fridays, I mean, sorry, on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And that will be live instruction, and that will be done synchronously, which means that the teachers are logging in to the classroom, students that are remote are logging into the classroom, and there can be that interaction. That is a heavy haul for our teachers, and I'm going to ask for patience and grace as we move forward with that, because to be able to kind of juggle students in front of you and then students online, we're going to ask for consideration of what's happening at home as far as behavior is concerned, having kids participate the best way that they possibly can. I'm sure we might run into- I'm sure we might run into technology issues, and we'll accommodate and adapt when those occur. But I think as we move forward, we are constantly striving to offer the best education we possibly can to the students in Bethel Park. When you look at instruction, it will be synchronous, and that means that everybody is learning at the same time, no matter what, how you're getting into the classroom, whether you're getting into the classroom via technology or you're actually sitting in the classroom. You're following your regular schedule with that, and you are participating as if you were in the classroom. This is something that's going to look a lot more familiar to our K through 4 families as they have been learning in the last few weeks in a synchronous model. The thing that'll change is half of the kids are going to be in the classroom. At the secondary level, this means that you're going to have instruction four days a week. We're using Fridays as a deep cleaning opportunity and also a planning opportunity as we move forward, because this is a different animal for teachers, and for them to be able to collaborate and come up with better ideas and improve on lessons and improve our program, it's essential to give effective time to do that, and that'll be on Fridays. The instruction will also be extended for our kids that are currently attending our autistic and life skills support, and we're going to extend that. So that is going to look like the opportunity for our kids that have designation of English as a second language learner, or some of our learning support students will be looked at and have the opportunity to come in, maybe more than just their two days if the IEP team and the evaluation of a rubric determines that that is something that would be helpful to those children to grow further. Busing, bus assignments will be coming out shortly, as well as the group assignment. Our students are all going to be asked to be in assigned seats daily. You must wear a mask, and that's when you're on the bus. As I'm sure you're aware, when you go onto a bus, it's going to be very difficult for us to manage a six-feet-apart distance. We are going to work diligently to have family members sit together, keep the seats to two people at the most, and in some cases, offer that as one person per seat. And we are very open for parents to provide transportation, and the building principals will be disseminating that information. With that being said, Bethel Park is, has a lot of main areas where if we have a lot of cars coming in, we may cause some transportation traffic jams and those kind of things. As we move forward, I think that it's going to be, just be a little bit patient as we work through those dilemmas that might occur based on the amount of families that we have that are dropping off. You should be getting all of that information from the principals within the day or so. So when we look at our daily expectations, if the child is in school, if it's an A day or a B day, depending on how your child is designated, your student will, if they're in school, they report to school. Please do not bring your child in earlier, or think that you can drop your child off earlier than the opening of the school. We don't have, will not have common areas, the buildings will not be open, to provide an opportunity for kids to congregate. So you won't have that as an ability to meet that need. So report to the school no earlier than the opening time that the principals share with you. Breakfast will be available daily. You're going to report directly to your scheduled class at that time. You're going to follow your typical brick-and-mortar schedule, and lunch will be available each day. If you are at home on the days in which, the opposite days that you're not in school, you're going to log into your class from home, you're going to participate. We're asking that you turn on your camera so the teachers can see you during the lesson. So that means, and I'm going to share also some student expectations for online learning. Make sure that you're in an appropriate place, make sure that there's not many distractions, make sure that you're attentive, and all of those kind of things that will enhance your ability to learn in that environment. And I'll share the online learning expectations. Kindergarten is one of, that foundation of kindergarten is essential, and we're very aware of that. And we, our goal is to make, to progress and have the kindergarten students into school starting on October 6th. They will be participating in the hy-
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, I'm sorry, October 26th. They will be attending the hybrid program up until then, but we, if we are able to, and as Dr. Jan Santi says, the numbers indicate, and we're able to meet that six-feet requirement, and if we're not, we're going to give you that information ahead of time to make that decision of whether you want your child to attend kindergarten in person. But we would really like to have that foundation of starting our kindergarten students here in the next few weeks or so, starting October 26th. The kindergarten students will be with us Monday through Thursday. Student expectations, that's a hot link, so when you're, if you go onto the website, you'll be able to click on that, and it goes through some student expectations of preparing yourself for online learning. Parents need to know that if a child is being disruptive and they're online, the teachers have the right to kind of kick them out of the class, similar to the way they would if they were in the, if they were in brick-and-mortar and in that classroom and causing a disruption. We ask that the students participate in that environment, and you know, we move forward with trying to make the best of the situation in which it's, we've been presented. And then, I just want to remind everybody, and Dr. Jan Santi also said this, but this is a fluid process. We are, you know, you never know what's going to happen as far as the virus is concerned. But what we have done is we've established a foundation here by the way in which we chose to open the Bethel Park schools, that our teachers have now experienced remote learning that they had never done before. They are experts at brick-and-mortar learning, and we know that the extraordinary job that they do every day. We're moving into hybrid learning, and that is a new endeavor in and of itself that we're going to gain information, grow from, and approve upon as we go through it. And at that point, we are able to do whatever we need to do and have that experience to go from one learning expectation to another, or learning model to another without hesitation. With that being said, that is the conclusion of the PowerPoint that I will present, and will be sending out some information to you. It'll be available on our website later tonight or early tomorrow morning. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question. So in the past, when we have regular school, we have allowed a private company to come in to provide before and after-school daycare. Is that going to be allowed during this hybrid situation or not?
Did you, do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, yeah, and I think the plan is that we can move forward with that if the hybrid plan is approved, and I think a lot of parents are very excited about that.
Yeah, I think, that is a service that we want, we want to see if we could provide it. And Dr. Tempirio, there's been a request from our in-school, after-school programs, and that's the direction we're moving in.
For the days the child is in hybrid?
Correct. So truly, they're going to be there Monday through Thursday, because they potentially could have kids there on Monday, but it's just available for those kids on the days in which they are assigned to be in the school.
Okay, so the program will be available, but the kids will only be able to use it on the day they're in school?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you. Other questions?
Yes, first of all, I just want to thank you for the presentation, and thank all of you for the work you've been doing on this. I'm really excited to get our kids back into the buildings for numerous reasons that I'm not going to go into right now, because I've gone into in-depth in the past. I'm also very excited about the synchronous schedule, because I've always thought it was crucial to the continuity of learning for our students who are out, remote learning, to be able to learn at the same pace, so we're not doing a lot of back-and-forth, backtracking and reinforcement on the in-person days. But one of my questions about that is, some of the families, particularly the families of younger students who need care during the day, may not be able to accommodate our schedule for the remote learning days. Do we have the means to accommodate their needs for education on those days?
Many of our teachers have provided for those kids, being in the synchronous approach now that we've been doing for the last few weeks. And that will be offered as we move forward as well. The teachers do an extraordinary job to reach out to the families, provide support when needed. If a parent is having some concerns or has some issues that they feel that the teacher needs to provide additional support for, please don't hesitate to reach out to the teacher, reach out to the principal, reach out to myself. You know, we want to do the best that we possibly can for every child in Bethel Park, and I think that we have that benefit moving forward. I think it's something that the teachers have been doing in brick-and-mortar when a child is absent. It's something that they've been doing during this remote time synchronously at the elementary level, and I don't, I'm not concerned, quite frankly, that they're going to step up to the plate and do what's best for kids.
Next two things I have, real quick, are just real quick statements. First of all, I know in this brief presentation, it's not going to answer all of the parents' questions. We're going to get questions, we expect to get questions. Please send your building principals, your administrators, and the board your questions, and we'll try to get them answered and resolved in the best manner possible. The second thing is, I want to reiterate that there is still a full online option available for the entire 2021 school year if there is anybody who's uncomfortable with sending their children in the classroom. So this is, this is an option to send your children back to hybrid. Again, I think it's imperative to get kids in the building as much as possible, but you do have the option, if you don't feel safe, to keep your kids at home with the full online synchronous option.
Thank you, Mr. Magal. I'm glad you brought that up.
And I think we should call it full remote learning, because our online academy is different than what we're offering here.
Right.
So I just want to make that, I just want that distinction to be clear. That if you choose remote learning, you can continue that throughout the year.
Correct.
Choosing our Bethel Park Online Academy is a different choice.
Correct. The online academy is not Bethel Park teachers nor Bethel Park curriculum. The full remote, to stay full remote learning, you're basically staying in the classroom that you're currently in and logging in from home synchronously.
Mrs. O'Rourke, can you explain that a little more? I'd like the elementary school parents to have a clear picture of what this is going to look like, because my understanding of all this is there's going to be anywhere from 10 to 12 children in the classroom and 10 to 12 children on the computer with one teacher. Are we looking at next week, because you just said, "kick them out of the classroom", and I got about four emails saying, "How do we kick them out of the classroom when we're supposed to be paying attention to the students in the classroom, not the students online?" That is a large concern of the most of our elementary teachers. Seventy percent of our elementary teachers asked us to send them back full in-person starting next week.
Really what it comes down to is that learning curve of, and potentially, it could mean an assistant or a student teacher or an aide in the classroom. We're not opposed to providing those resources. But really, what it comes down to is, if the kid is learning at home and not participating, but not being a disruption, the focus of the teacher, without a doubt, and parents need to be well aware of this, is that the focus of the teacher, just by human nature, is going to be with those students that are directly in front of them. One of the benefits of this is the next day, the kids that were online are now in the classroom. So there's that continuity of education that continues. When I talk of, you know, if somebody is being disruptive and causing some issues in the classroom, then that is when, you know, the teacher gets, as they do with, you know, in their classrooms now, if there's a disruption, you know, they get, they get the kids started on an activity, they walk over to the computer, they address that student that is causing a disruption online, and then they continue with their instruction. Like I said at the beginning, this is not an easy lift at all. It is not an easy concept. We are asking a significant amount from teachers that have never done this before, and that's significant. But at the same time, that is the best that we have to offer, is our teachers teaching our curriculum to our kids. And we need to, we need to do whatever that takes to make that happen. And there's going to be, there potentially could be changes as we're going forward. There could be additional people in the classroom. There can be additional technology to support that as we move forward. I think right now, we have a basis and a foundation of success. I see it happening in classrooms, that some teachers are already well aware of what needs to be done. They've looked, they've explored, they've gotten detail. And we're here to support those that aren't. I'm not, I think first and foremost, as I've never been, and I can't or I won't, I think this is, let's try and see what happens and adapt.
Okay, I have. Okay, so I just want to repeat some of the things that you said. So first of all, regardless of whether people want to go back full in, we are not allowed to.
Correct.
We basically cannot do that. We understand everybody wants to be there, but we cannot do that based on the requirements, based on our advice from our solicitor, based on our numbers in Allegheny County.
Correct.
Second of all, what I hear you saying is that we're going to, we're going to start this hybrid program, and we're going to closely monitor it. And Dr., I mean, and Mr. Ryer, if we need technology, you're going to come to us with those concerns.
Correct.
And if we need additional people in the classroom, you're going to come to us as soon as possible with those concerns.
Correct.
And we do have some people who can go into the classrooms, instructional aides and so forth, to help out. But this is going to be the beginning that will be closely monitored by principals and all of you, so that if we need additional resources to help make this work, we will be, you will come to us with that information, and we'll be able to decide what we can do to make it better.
Yes, and what I plan on doing is, each meeting that we have, I'll be more than happy to give an update and go from there, you know? Because you, let's face it, you're going to hear it. You know, you guys as board members are probably going to hear it just even faster than I may. But we're going to, we're going to work-
Other questions from board members?
Wait, wait, I got another one.
Well, let's stick in the same topic, though.
That's where I'm, yeah.
Okay.
If you've got one, and then we, can you go back?
Yeah, I do. I mean, this, we just need to approach this problem like it's not, we're not trying to get through the next three weeks, we've got to get through the next eight months, and we're going to be dealing with this problem the entire time. I mean, I think that's reasonable to assume.
Yes.
So whether it's, you know, the technology problems, we've got to rapidly fix those, we've got to make this push-button. And, you know, also in the staff, in the classroom, just supporting the staff, we've got to maximize the amount of instructional time. Right now, I do fear, and it's probably a problem that every district's dealing with, that the amount of instructional time is going to be severely decreased trying to support two different classrooms, virtual and physical. So whatever investments we need to make, or restructuring of staff, or rooms, or whatever, we need to focus on maximizing that instructional time. But the plan in general is far better than it was last week. I thought last week, it was incredibly confusing, and this is very clear, and it'll allow us to transition back and forth between the three modes with a simple phone call. us to transition back and forth between the three modes with a simple phone call, you know, letting people know what's going on, and they're going to understand it, okay? So last week, I wasn't impressed. This week, it's much better.
Thank you.
My, my next question is kind of a follow-up to that. You've got students that are having technology problems, that are blacking themselves out, that are doing other things. My concern is, we are having the teacher focus so much on the in-person learning that if it happens to be any parent's child that has a question, they're not seeing the screen. I'm going to ask that we look at this after next Wednesday, three days into this hybrid, and find out if we need extra people in especially K to 2, to find those kids that do not, are still working on muting and unmuting themselves while they're at home, because guess what? Those kids are going to go unfounded with questions, and then you're repeating yourself the next day, and those kids that were in there are going to lose interest. So Monday, you have a problem with the kid that's at home, Tuesday, they're in the classroom, you're reviewing the same thing again, you're going to lose all those kids on Monday because they already learned it. But you have, we have to find a balance. And I'm going to tell parents out there right now, it's not that I don't agree with this MOU, this is my problem with how this is going, and I will not be voting for this MOU tonight. I have large concerns about the elementary, especially K to 2, and how this is being set up. I've watched the classroom, I have been in other teachers' classrooms over the last two weeks, large concerns about how this is going.
Other questions for Dr. Jan, Dr. O'Rourke?
And I don't want to appear to be defensive about the plan, Mrs. Turner, because we're very proud of it, but I think as we've tried to explain so many times before, we keep trying to improve it and improve it and improve it. Is the plan perfect? No, it is not perfect, but it represents the amount of perfection that we have been able to produce at this present time, following all of the CCD guidelines, the county and the state guidelines for restorative practices and for students in school. And I think sometimes I feel like just keep needing to emphasize that with you. If that were not the case, I think your points would be, from my judgment, and I respect them so much, more valid, but at this point, you need to understand, there's multiple things occurring that we need to comply with and make sure that are occurring, and that's what we're able to do at this present time to the best of our abilities. So we're hoping that you do find it, we'll respect obviously yours and any other board members, but we're certainly hopeful that you'll find it within yourself to respectfully support the plan. And I rarely say that to board members.
You guys, I mean, everybody's known this, I've been preaching this for weeks now.
Yes.
It's not that the plan isn't good. I agree with Mr. Christensen, this is a much better improvement over last week. I still have a large concern about K to 2.
And that's why
But kindergarten's going back, but we're not sending first and second grade back. That, it's, there's, there's just huge, there's a huge thing there, I've heard from a lot of parents, and they want those kids back in the classroom. I can't, I have some concerns about
We all want those kids back in the classroom.
I know, I know, I know. I know, I know.
We can't do six feet.
We can't do it.
We can't do six feet. And when we do kindergarten
Well, we took, we took two months off the first plan that we approved, moving it up from January to November. Is there any reason why we can't evaluate the hybrid situation next week and determine if the plan can be changed again? I mean, not approving this plan means that we stay as we are for another week.
No, we don't have an MOU beyond tomorrow.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, so right now, you know, I look at this as putting us on the right path. Now, can we accelerate the path? You know, can we go from crawl, walk, to run and get there faster? You know, that's what we should always be looking at.
That's what I was going to say.
We took two months off the last plan, we should try to take two weeks off this plan.
If the, if the PDE CDC guidelines move to low, which is that first link that I had on that first page, I think the sooner we can get the kids back, the better, you know, the better off we are. So if we move to low, we may very well be making an announcement that says, you know, we're coming all back. That would be the intent. And I, and, you know, I think it's imperative to do that, and we're going to reden, you know, repopulate the building with select groups as we move forward, kindergarten, special education, some of our most needy, as we move forward. But that would be the intent is, is our goal would be the, you know, the first day of the second nine weeks, but if we can move forward, that's what we want to do. We want, that's, that's the best education that we have to offer.
Well, my concern is, and we all know this, this was brought up before, there are other school districts that are sending elementary school kids back starting next week. And I know that North Alle, I know that, you know, one school has put the brakes on, but there is another school moving full force, and they are in Allegheny County. I don't know, I know the details that I have been privy to from the board members that are there when I've asked questions. I'm just, it's a long shot. I have talked to every first, most first and second grade teachers in this district, and they don't know how they're going to do this. They honest to goodness do not know how they are going to watch children on the screen and try and educate them and deal with the disciplinary issues and everything else of these kids coming back next week. So that's where I'm sitting. I understand, but that's where I'm sitting.
Okay, and I mean, we can, I guess, go on and on, and I
Right.
won't make any more comments about it, but I will say this, you need to understand that this plan is a result of teacher input and agreement. So that is not what's being said as the teachers have already agreed and signed off on in the plan. I'm not saying that we're not concerned about your concerns, we're certainly going to address those. I think Mr. Christensen stated them very well, but you also need to understand that that doesn't seem to be entirely accurate because we have a plan signed off on and approved by teachers. And the reason we didn't go for the K1 and 2 is because we were not be able to make that work at this present time with following the safety and health guidelines. And we, Kim, we need to do that. So with those two points, I mean, I, I don't know what else I can say, so I won't say anything else, but believe me, our goals are the same as yours, we're looking at them and trying to reach them a little differently.
And I asked
Dr. Imperial, this is Darren McGregor. I think everybody
Darren, can you just hold off one second?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ando's going to say something, and then I'll call on you.
I've had the, the good fortune of helping some of our other clients through some of these remote learning discipline issues. And Mrs. Turner's concern is very real, and I understand that, that those, you know, activities that occur on the camera, teachers who care about what they do feel that they need to control that as well. Districts have a clear set of boundaries to their jurisdiction. Because we're remote learning right now, we're providing virtual learning, those extend a little bit into the home, but not, not, not much. And parents and guardians will still be responsible for monitoring, and caregivers will be still responsible for monitoring the conduct of the student while they are participating in remote learning. I think it's incumbent upon school principals to identify the expectations of conduct and quickly address those issues when they, when they occur, because we recognize that they will. I think that the point about paraprofessional, the need for additional support at certain grade bands has been heard by your administration. But I just wanted to comment on, you know, I think there was a CNN article the other day, I assume it was suspended for having a BB gun in his bedroom, and it came on camera, and that district's looking a little, you know, an issue right now because our jurisdiction does not extend into private homes, and I think parents need to still understand that they have a responsibility in that arena.
Thank you. Mr. McGregor?
Yeah, what I was saying, I think everybody in the boardroom, everybody who's listening in wants everyone to go back on time. Have we talked, have we thought about a plan? Because we have eight buildings. If we're going to transition into full-time school for at least K through 4, if not spreading them out throughout the district, to get them in front of their teacher, where there are definitely bigger classrooms. I know at William Penn, third grade has large classroom sizes and small rooms, but if we break those kids up over at NAMs or the IMS or high school, maybe that is, we could do something like that. And the second, the second question I have, and this is probably for Dr. Jan Santa, is what happens if Allegheny County goes low for the next two weeks? Are we able to implement a full return or more of a synchronous return in that situation? I know those are, those are two big questions, and I apologize.
I think it's a great question, and as we've said along the way, that our plan is subject to change, but it's also subject to change in a positive as far as getting students back to school fully. So once we get the green light, we certainly would consider that. Knowing that, along the way, if it goes south, we're going to adjust back to remote when we need to.
Mrs. Dobbs, can I make a comment?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to agree with Mr. Christensen. I, I believe that this is great strides from where we were, and I think Dr. Jan Santa has told us all along that we have the opportunity to move forward faster with coming back to school, which I'm a proponent of. Obviously, you mentioned that from the very beginning, that we've discussed that. So, you know, this is where we are, and this is where we, we have to deal with what we have to deal with. So I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this plan tonight, and I, you know, I'd like to see some changes as we continue, but we need to do the next step.
Thank you. Also, the, the idea, Mr. McGregor, the idea about spreading kids around is a good idea, except for the fact that we all, we will, in the hybrid situation, have those buildings full, classrooms full with the other hybrid kids. So if we didn't have anybody else in the classrooms, we could possibly do that. And then the other thing is, personally, as a public official, I'm going to follow the guidelines, and I think that's a good example for us to do for our students, to show them that government matters and that we should be following the regulations that are put out in front of us, especially in the position that we are at in right now. And as community members and students are watching us, I respect those guidelines, and I will follow them.
Now, Ms. Dobbs, I understand what you're saying. There has been discussion about moving, you know, schools around and grades around, possibly moving fifth grade up to IMS. If that's the case, then there's plenty of room to move stuff around. So, you know, I'm trying to think outside the box. I know a lot of parents are questioning our motives and our motivations and our thinking behind this, and it's nothing against the plan whatsoever. I do agree with Russ, I like this plan so much better than the one that was presented last week. So that's all.
Okay, I just, I didn't quite clear understand that. Somebody, is somebody else trying to talk?
Yes, Mr. Scousa.
Okay.
Dr. O'Rourke, will all the students have the same teacher in this hybrid model?
That's our intent at this point, is to have the kids stay with the current teacher. Now, it has been brought to my attention that some other school districts are using a designated online teacher for those students that are declaring themselves to be remote learners for the remainder of the year. I think it's important for us at this point in time to look at how many of those students will continue. I'm hoping that we'll have more students in school than choose that remote option. But right now, the plan is that the students will remain with the teacher in which they are currently assigned.
Let me make, let me make sure this is clear. For the cyber academy, are those students getting a different curriculum? Like, if they're going 100% remote, what, does it change for them? Are they, are they with the Bethel Park teacher?
BP Cyber Academy is a different curriculum. It is, it is something that we contract with, and it's not Bethel Park teachers. That's our cyber academy for those students that are choosing the online remote through the safety, health and safety plan. Those are our teachers and our curriculum. There's two different things.
Well, I just want to, I just want to be sure that if a student decides to stay 100% cyber, what happens to that student's schedule or, and teacher?
Right now, if the student is enrolled in Bethel Park School District, not the online academy, that student stays with their schedule and enters the classroom remotely synchronously.
Okay. Okay. And then I have another question. Could you explain Fridays, again, just to be clear for the community, that this is a deep clean day, from what I'm hearing? Is there, is there staff in the building on Friday, or there's not, there's no one in the buildings? Is it an asynchronous day? Just give me some specifics there, just so that the community knows what Friday is.
Friday is an asynchronous day. It is a day in which we are providing deep cleaning. Our teachers are welcome to come into the classrooms and work in the buildings around the cleaning schedule, but it is, it is a day in which they are working on planning and improving the educational model that we're offering.
Okay, so staff, that's an optional thing for them to come in that day?
Yes.
Okay.
Students are asynchronous. They have to, they have to prepare lessons, they have to, that's an opportunity for them to, for the teachers to reach out to the students. There's asynchronous lessons, it's not, there's times for meetings and those kind of things that can happen during that day.
Okay, and is there a way that we're going to be able to measure, I guess, like, the equity of education? When you have students that are, you know, home versus in the classroom? I know this, this kind of goes along with some of the questions that were already asked, especially with what Mrs. Turner was saying, like, how are we, how are you going to have a teacher focused on one group? Obviously, there's two groups. What kind of measurements or tools can we put in place to make sure that, you know, we're not, we're not favoring one group over the other? Like, basically having your haves and have-nots? Meaning that, you know, we know that teachers, teachers, and again, I'm a teacher, so I, would I naturally gravitate, just because of the years of experience of being in the classroom? Would I naturally gravitate to the kids in the room? I would probably think yes, but then at the same time, you know, I have to be aware of those students that are at home, and then I owe it to them, right? So I got to make sure that I keep them connected so that they feel that they're part of the classroom. And I know it switches for the next day, but, I mean, I still think that, is there some type of tool or a way of measuring and trying to keep track to see if this is effective? I just want to make sure that it's equitable.
Sure, and I think that because we're using the Bethel Park curriculum, the formative assessments and the curriculum-based assessments are benchmarks, and we'll still be continuing no matter what, which way the child is coming into the classroom. So if, when we look at our benchmark assessments and we see that there is some type of discrepancy with the, what students are getting from one venue to the other, then I think that that's definitely data that we want to look at to improve our program if that comes to fruition.
And, Jan, let me just say this, Mr. Scousa, for the point that you mentioned, as I've said before, we are meeting with the principals first thing tomorrow morning. We're going, I'm writing all these points down. I believe that the teachers, I've been in the teaching situation like that myself, you continually get better at responding. continually get better at responding to both groups, and there are ways to do it. This is 2020, you know, this isn't like 1970. So, our teachers and many of our teachers are highly skilled with technology and ways to engage all kids. But, to your point, we will emphasize that to, we will emphasize that point to our principals to tomorrow morning, to work very diligently with the teachers to make sure that that is occurring. And again, our teachers did agree to this in our teacher agreement, and this was a part of it, or a big part of it. So, we have to believe that they agreed to it because they believe they can make this happen, and I believe they can make it happen, and I believe they will make it happen.
Doc, if I can just make a quick point onto your point. You've really recognized folks that have worked so very hard, teachers are really working extremely hard, but I also want to mention, the principals, great schools have great principals. Our principals have been just working so hard and so many hours. I just wanted to mention, besides all the constituents that have been working hard, our principals have really been working very, very hard, and I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jan Sante. In regard to one of the questions that you had, Mr. Scalzo, about the teachers not ever, the teacher staying always with the student, I would like Mrs. Zundell to explain a situation where that might not happen.
So, in working with the Federation to move forward, the MOU that the board will later be approving tonight, there has been a request, and the district has agreed to explore this concept more of potentially designating a teacher to be a remote teacher and to have on his or her case roster, fully remote students, so that those students would no longer be tuning into instruction that is occurring in the classroom, but would rather be working completely remotely with a remote teacher. Each of those situations would be handled on an individual basis and would be obviously negotiated based upon the situation and whether it's feasible to make those types of changes. But that is one situation in which a class roster may have, and we don't anticipate that it will happen frequently, if at all. It is just something that the district has committed, as many other districts in the area have committed to exploring with their teaching staff.
And a teacher might take a leave based on the hybrid scenario, and then that teacher would no longer be with that classroom at all. So, that, those are two situations, Mr. Scalzo, that I wanted to make sure that were clarified in terms of your question.
Okay, and there's another, one more question about in the classroom itself. Now, is the, was the teacher, is the teacher being told where to stand, or, you know, how to adjust their delivery? Or, you know, in this new model that we've all know that is brand-new, we have never done this before. So, has there been some type of meeting with the teachers based on, you know, how do we go about actually delivering this physically while they're in the room? Are they moving around with technology? Are they moving around with the, how is this going to work inside of that room? Has that all been discussed, or is it, you know, the staff member can freely just, you know, do whatever they think is needed? Or, has there been some type of plan to discuss where you should be oriented? Where's the best place for, you know, effective learning if we're trying to do this new model? Has anything been suggested, or have the teachers been able to meet with admin and collaborate on something like that?
It has been discussed. It will be discussed in more detail. We are making provisions in one of the updated technology pieces of equipment that we're looking at adopting. Mr. Scalzo, we'll give the teachers more of an opportunity to be more mobile in the classroom. Yes, we would like to see that occur.
And there's in-service on Thursday for two hours, right? That we have that time?
That's right. That's why we didn't.
Yeah, a portion of that is working with our learning management system and working on that process, but there is time there.
But that's all part of the whole.
It is, and I think it's important, once again, just to reiterate, that what we start on Monday, you know, we're going to learn as we go through and make, you know, try to meet the challenges as they come up on a regular basis. So, I think that what Mr. Scalzo is saying is definitely conversations that we need to continue to have across our district.
I guess what I'm trying to say is that maybe we should have modeled this even in a practice classroom, where I don't care if it's all adults or whatever, it doesn't matter to me. I think we should have modeled something like that to get some feedback, to figure out what's best in that room. We don't know. Okay, so what's going to happen? We're going in on Monday. We'll just figure it out. That's just going to, that's what's going to happen. That's where I'm frustrated right now. I'm frustrated that we could have taken a week of time to maybe figure it out, you know, what works? Where's the positioning best? Where's the, if you're using a Bluetooth microphone, or if you're using a speaker in there so that you can hear all students, including the ones online, where is all this preparation? I feel that we're just going to go in Monday, and we'll just see what happens. That is my frustration, and I think parents are going to, parents are definitely going to pick up on that when that starts to happen. Why didn't we do this two weeks ago? We knew that we were going into a hybrid model. We knew that four weeks ago. Why isn't the technology figured out for this exact moment? You know, last week, we decided to purchase $30,000 worth of technology, and then we are going to test it the day after we buy it? I don't even understand that. I don't even understand that logic. Why shouldn't, we should have had a plan four weeks ago, testing that equipment, and then it comes, and it will be brought to us, and then we can decide to purchase it. I just don't understand what's happening here. I really don't.
Well, Mr. Scalzo, one of the things hopefully will be helpful to you to understand is, we have been testing those kinds of things. Those kinds of things have been going on at the buildings, they've been going on, particularly the high school has been doing a lot of that, it's been occurring on the other buildings as well. We have bought the devices that the teachers have been using and practicing with. No one, I think, is saying, gee, let's let Monday come and just see what happens. We have been preparing for that, but we have also been preparing and appreciate that glitches will occur, and we're not going to feel defeated by those. Our goal is to make the teacher mobile in the classroom. We have ways to do that. It's going to occur. We're addressing all of these issues, all the issues that we're talking, that you're talking about. We've spent an enormous amount of time working with and to refocus on your good comments and good questions and everything the board has said, that, and we knew these things were going to come up. That's why we're meeting with the administrators the first thing tomorrow morning, to review all of this and to be sure that those kinds of things are in place. So, we are working on it.
If that's the case, if that's the case, an educator in the room, if you've been planning, if there's an educator in the room, please tell me, where is the best place to be in that classroom? If you're saying what you're, if you're saying that we have been planning, we've been doing all these things, I want to know. Somebody tell me, how successful has the Bluetooth device been or the speaker? Is there a report on this? Is there, do we have a report on how well the technology is working during this testing phase or this planning phase and everything that you're saying? Where is it? Where are the exact answers? That's what I'm waiting for.
Do you want, Mr. Ryan, do you want to address some of those concerns?
So, Mr. Scalzo, there's been a lot of testing, but, you know, has there been enough? I don't think there can ever be enough in this situation. Unfortunately, or fortunately, the same staff that is tasked with testing the sound system is also tasked with troubleshooting problems that parents and students are having with Schoology and teachers are having with Schoology, is tasked with, you know, installing new wireless access points in order to make sure that we have adequate coverage in our rooms. So, there's a lot going on. I get it. We're all working as hard and as quickly as we can as far as the proper location in a classroom for Bluetooth.
Okay, so...
All right. I just want to, I just want to continue with my question. And again, maybe we can just start with, if we knew in August that we were going virtual and then hybrid, and we knew this day was coming, we knew that we were going to have this split classroom, I just want to know why we weren't testing earlier? Why didn't we have a full report, maybe over two to three weeks of time with our teachers? That's what I'm talking about. There's no plan. There is no plan. We, last week, do you really think that anybody's going to really believe this? I mean, we just spent $30,000 last week, and then the comment was said that we will test it the day after. I mean, how's that a plan? Tell me how that is a plan. Don't you test things before you purchase things? I guess that's where I'm at.
I guess my question is, didn't, we didn't really know we had that issue until last week because we had started, right? I mean, that's why we went out and looked at other issues. I don't know how we could have tested it before that.
Russ, I'm saying that we knew we were going hybrid, for we passed this plan in August. So, at some point, we knew that we are going to hit a point where we are going to have half the students at home and half the students in school. So, that's called planning. You know that that's coming down the pipeline four weeks from now.
Actually, the plan was different in August. It was two days of synchronous and three days of asynchronous, so we didn't have to worry about the kids at home.
And the other, the other issue too is, the plan was that the kids would have their Chromebook no matter where they were, their device no matter where they were. So, the microphone, the camera, all of those kind of things could be with the student, similar to what we're having right here in this room right now, where you have your computer up, but you're listening live as well in that, in that, in this environment. What we found when we were looking at that is that there might be a benefit to have a speaker in the classroom and a microphone on the teacher, because then you could, the kids wouldn't be distracted when they're in the classroom to have their Chromebook in front of them. So, the plan has evolved by the experiences that we've moved forward with, and that's the implementation of the additional technology. And also, looking at what some of our neighbors, we look at, you know, our neighbors and what they're doing in their classrooms, and if it's working and if it's not, or what we want to explore or not explore. So, the plan was there, it's just the evolution of the plan. And quite frankly, Mr. Scalzo, you're going to see that a lot because we're doing something that we've never done before. And when that, when that happens, I've always progressed, said in this school district that it's important to take calculated risks, to learn more, and to feel confident in failure because that's when we learn more and become better, and we're going to have those opportunities as we move forward.
I would just say that, you know, the reason why you do plans is especially when you haven't done things before, okay? So that you have some, you know, confidence that you're actually going to be able to complete it. But, maybe to come to an action item here, because I think, you know, Vince, what you're highlighting is really important. You know, we shouldn't just, on next Monday, let everybody kind of figure this out for themselves. So, could we do, you know, kind of like what we're doing for the safety procedures, these little videos? Can we at least create an internal communication, some kind of video that shows the best practice, how to set up the room, how to get the class started, how to do these things? So, everybody has at least a frame of reference, a benchmark for what we think is the best approach, and they don't have to start from zero. And that should be very simple, should be no more than five minutes. If it's more than five minutes, that's a reflection on us that what we're asking people to do is too complex, okay? Keep it short, show how to set up the classroom, where to stand, as a recommendation. You know, if people have a better approach, fantastic, but at least help them get started.
Good plan, Mr. Christensen. That's a good idea.
That's a very helpful comment.
All right, let's move into the public comments on agenda items. I think we have about 15 of them.
There's more comments.
Yeah.
Adam Foot there at 28.
Adam Foot, I think, was the first one. Okay. All right. Adam Foot, address 100 Suzanne Court. The move to a hybrid plan from the remote learning plan is possible and currently being done successfully by many local districts. I commend the board and administration for moving in this direction. However, the planning and communication necessary to successfully implement and provide meaningful instruction to students is lacking. If I were to make an analogy of your return to school plan, it would be as follows. You've invited your friends over for dinner and had previously canceled dinner plans on your friends, but this time you promised it would be ready at 6:00 PM sharp. As 6:00 approaches, you realize the dinner isn't going to be ready. Instead of upsetting your dinner guests for a second time, you decide to pull the half-cooked meal out of the oven and let everyone dig in. Who knows? Maybe it works out just fine, or everyone gets sick and never wants to trust you for dinner ever again. While not a perfect analogy, it's fitting to the point that I don't believe your plans are fully cooked for a return to school. If they are, the communication from the district has been poor. In the recent commitment survey, it stated that the students may have a different teacher based on the results of the survey or their learning plan selection. I find this unacceptable. Now more than ever, relationships have been built between students, teachers, classmates, parents, grandparents, caregivers, and anybody else who has helped guide distance learning from home. If classrooms or teachers were to change, this should have been addressed in August, not October. As to providing full remote as compared to hybrid learning, why is a classroom going to operate any differently if it is remote versus hybrid? For two or three days a week, a hybrid student will still need to learn through online instruction. Additionally, the need for a student to quarantine may require them to learn remotely for a few weeks anyway. Are you going to change their classroom assignment every few weeks? We have also been left in the dark when it comes to expectations for our children each day. These are things like how and when will mask breaks occur, and will, and how will small group instruction take place? How and how often will common areas in classrooms be sanitized and disinfected? Will students eat in the cafeteria? Are tables being sanitized between classes? Are special area teachers hosting classes or traveling to classrooms? With the lack of registered nurses, who in each building is responsible for deciding if a student needs placed in an isolation area? Will you have an isolation area? Who is coordinating possible exposure and contact tracing within the district? Will classrooms utilize common or shared spaces, i.e. classroom libraries, manipulative shared materials, et cetera? This is only a sampling of the questions that need to be considered by the district and also communicated to parents in a concise and meaningful way. All of my concerns, the lack of stability for students, is my primary concern. Please keep students in their current classrooms, provide high-quality in-person instruction, high-quality remote instruction, properly equip the teachers with the technology they require, and clearly lay out these plans to the public. Thank you for your time. Okay, the next one is Candace Bush.
I can take that one. Candace Bush, 898 Clifton Road, Bethel Park. I was pleased to hear about the new plan that was discussed in the school board meeting on September 22nd with synchronized learning. This plan allows for two groups of students going to school two days a week while alternating Fridays between both groups. I'm a teacher and a teacher. I'm a teacher in a neighboring district. The plan mirrors what my district has been doing since September 8th. Yes, it has its challenges, but my school district is making it work. While recently speaking with a friend in Bethel Park, she informed me that a school board member told her that this individual and four others would be voting against the plan. I was shocked to hear that a school board member has been telling the public their decisions to vote against the new plan based on personal agendas and not what is best for all students in the school district. There are children, including mine, who are struggling with completing the work that has been assigned to them to complete on asynchronous days. Children learn the best when they can interact with their teacher. This new plan will allow students the opportunity to interact with their teachers every day. If you do not like the new plan for your child, then please do not hold back all students for interacting with their teachers five days a week. It's time to get our children back to school in a, in a way where they can truly interface face-to-face, interact face-to-face with their teachers and experience real learning. Children and families cannot continue to struggle while competing assignments without the support of teachers during asynchronous learning days.
Next one is Lynn Karen, 6141 Dalmatian Drive. As a grandmother helping my 10-year-old grandson with online classes while taking care of his baby brother and two-year-old sister, I am finding a great deal of resistance from my grandson. He gets frustrated when he gets kicked off the system. I cannot answer some of the workbook questions. Together, we continue to try to get on at the right times. He seems depressed since he is having no interaction with other children. Please let the children go to school at least two days a week.
The next one, Mr. Crowley. Ken Crowley, 2020 Millennial Court. Good evening. I am writing to advocate for our youngest learners, specifically those in grades K to 4. Those students are at the greatest disadvantage right now and need to return to the classroom as soon as possible. Waiting until November only allows further regression to occur and will not solve the ongoing problem of teaching remote and in turn hybrid, and in turn hybrid to those students. Our teachers are phenomenal, but they can only do so much and are not getting the support they deserve. The same goes for our students. Several weeks ago, the board tasked central administration to observe a K to 2 classroom. I'm sure that never occurred since they would have not had proposed the current plan after observing the classes. The lack of disconnect between our central administration and our residents and elementary parents is disappointing and concerning. It is a time for the needs of our students to become the foremost priority of the district. Thank you for your hard work on behalf of the students and the important vote you have tonight.
Next is Brenda, 4638 Galway Drive. With the start of school on Monday, I'm not sure why we being told we will get guidance next week. School starts next week, not in two weeks. Seems confusing.
Next one's Brian Ripley, 4318 Anna Street. I am a Bethel Park resident with a high school senior and a freshman. I would like to state my belief that reopening school too soon may be disastrous decision. During early onset of COVID-19 and due to spring closures of school, our area dealt fairly well. The American Medical Association on July 23rd, 2020 clearly states that school closures led to a drastic decrease in cases and deaths from COVID-19. Prematurely full opening, fully opening schools for the benefit of the very vocal minority demanding full opening may not be the smartest solution. At least we have the ability to have remote learning. I feel that any risk should be considered very closely before school fully opens. What if, for example, we fully open, two weeks later, we have 30% cases? Now, what do we do? Fully close up again? The hybrid system may be something that can work, but honestly, if schools fully open for a second semester, our kids will handle it. Each and every parent must be encumbered towards our own children's learning for the short term. Also, the AMA has cited schools in Georgia that have fully opened and had skyrocketing cases. Who will be accountable if the unthinkable happens and we lose a child, parent, or teacher? Even a slight risk is still a risk. I only want to counter a course of let's fully open schools and let's go. Can we ask our teachers who are in an age bracket just to accept risk? Georgia's school superintendent tested positive after two weeks of being open. I don't have all the answers, but we should all try to at least honestly ask ourselves all the questions we can. Thank you.
I just want to remind community members also that please include your address if you want us to read your comment. This comment is from Becky Robert at 364 Church Road. Attendance question, if your child is due to come in on their day, but wake up with a headache and we keep them home, they go on their remote links and use synchronous and no attendance worries? Thank you.
I can take the next one. Megan Archer, 1012 Willow Glen Drive, Bethel Park. I want to encourage the board and administration to discuss face shields versus face masks with healthcare professionals. As you will see below, the CDC and the medical community know that face shields do not protect the same as a face mask. I highly encourage the district to not allow face shields. My daughter is in first grade and attends Lois Johnson and they all wear face masks and there has not been a language barrier due to the face masks. If a parent does not agree with face masks, then they should be kept at home remotely until there's a documented medical reason with an IEP is initially addressed. A face shield is primarily used for eye protection for the person wearing it. At this time, it is not known what level of protection a face mask provides to people nearby from the spray of respiratory droplets from the wearer. There is currently not enough evidence to support the effectiveness of face shields for source control. Therefore, CDC does not currently recommend the use of face shields as a substitute for masks. This information comes from CDC.gov. Thanks, Megan.
The next one is John Roberts, 3364 Appell Road. Asking teachers to teach both online and in-person students at the same time is simply too big of an ask for anyone to do. This will hurt instruction both at home and at school. Teachers will not be able to do this with just a laptop or webcam. Even now at home, my daughter has said when teachers attempt to use marker boards, she can, she cannot see what is being written. Teachers walking around will not be able to be heard by all at-home students. And if they can't walk around and are pinned to their desk, what's the point? Teachers will need additional cameras, something like a mini studio, and additional dedicated staff to do, for this to work. I'm having a hard time imagining how this is going to work, what happens to the original plan of having two days at school and two days online?
Next one's Ryan Gallagher, 354 Church Road. Thank you for all the hard work you have been doing. I feel like we are running headfirst into a hybrid plan, a hybrid without an actual plan. What is being done to help teachers with hybrid learning? The education plan discussed during the meeting wasn't really anything resembling a full-fledged plan. It sounds like a couple of teachers have been asked for help developing this plan. Have the teachers as a whole been sent any surveys or been given the opportunity to provide feedback on how the hybrid should look? I'm not sure on how elementary school teacher could be expected to teach students in person and remotely at the same time. Why don't we iron out a good plan before rushing into hybrid? All throughout this process, it has felt like the board is hurrying to get a rough draft of a plan and running with it rather than taking time to develop a good plan. If we aren't prepared, why not take a little more time to become prepared? I could see if new nine weeks was starting, but what's the difference between October 5th and October 12th or 19th? If it means having a better plan and avoiding forcing teachers to try to figure out on the fly, why not delay the hybrid until we are prepared? Thank you for your time.
Okay, the next one is Jennifer McAffoo, 1010 Suzanne Court. Good evening. I am writing to you not only as a concerned parent, but also as a concerned Bethel Park teacher. My children need to be in school, but continuously changing the hybrid plan is quite alarming to me. I have a second and fifth grader and there are daily challenges. The elementary school students cannot hold their attention long enough to be online all day. It will be near impossible for elementary students to pay attention when their teacher's attention is split between them and the students in the classroom. This is not a good teaching practice. We do not have the technology to successfully teach students online and in the physical classroom simultaneously. Every elementary student requires constant modeling and assistance. It is not possible for one teacher to meet the needs of all their students when some are online and others are in the building. I am extremely worried for my children, my students, and myself as a teacher if this plan is approved.
Kelly Rose, 2463 Bethel Church Road. As a parent, I'm completely shocked by some of the information shared tonight. First of all, no one sent any plans for parents to review tonight prior to this meeting, so we are all hearing all of this in real time. We need the notice that was stated last week. It was promised by Monday at the latest and we received no details to make any decisions. Hearing that we will know within a day of even what days our kids will be A or B is unacceptable. Hearing that videos are coming to explain, that is unacceptable. This information was needed before parents had to choose an option for their children. I actually received emails about in-person school supplies needed, carpool information to drop off and pick up kids, asking for volunteers to sew band instrument covers to keep them safe while playing, all before I had the information from the district that I needed. Simply, parents needed this information to be determined before this week. Parents need to make plans for their kids. We have no idea what next week looks like. Teachers should be focused on all students, not the ones in front of them. This is unacceptable to our children at home. Please, please, please recognize these children are not at home at their choice. It's a decision that a family has to make because they have parents, siblings, grandparents, who are at extremely high risks for this virus. It's not their fault and saying something like they can be kicked out of class is horrible and uncalled for. We need grace, patience, and understanding from everyone in the district. I'm actually astounded by the lack of previous information provided as promised and over these comments by our administration tonight. Bethel Park had months to work this out. Our teachers should be supported on this and it should not be a wait-and-see approach. They've done an amazing job over the past month. We should be prepared for our virtual students on day one of hybrid, not as we see requests for additional help or resources like aides or student teachers. Why was this not addressed before, six days before going back for hybrid? I do not want my remote student working with a remote teacher. I want them working with the teachers they've been working with since the beginning of the year. Reviewing with the admin tomorrow morning is too late. This is very disappointing. Please provide detailed information on how many kindergarten students will be present in a four-day-a-week in a late October opening and how you will keep five-year-olds socially distant. I was completely comfortable with seven or eight students in a class, but parents need to understand what that means for double the kids in a classroom and how will they stay distant? Will there be an option for students to stay in hybrid versus four days a week?
Next one is Sarah Chikis, 191 Stonewood Drive. Moving forward, will all children returning to their respective buildings be checked for their temperatures prior to entering the buildings every day? I understand you ask, you may ask parents to check their child's temperatures in the morning. However, mornings are understandably hectic enough and some may simply forgot to do rushing around. A backup temp check by individual school nurses would ensure the safety of all other students, teachers, pairs, and staff. Thank you.
Next one's Jonathan Yuman, 1131 McKnight Drive. What specifically are the requirements and metrics being used for the kindergarten four-day-in-person week to begin October 26th? If this is a fluid process, then the metrics being used for all these decisions should be published for the district parents to see. I cannot discern what statistics or trends are being used for any of the decisions being made. Another panelist just remarked that full in-school teaching just cannot happen. If that's so, how are other schools, school districts doing it? Her reasoning was that, that numbers in Allegheny County are prohibiting that from happening. What numbers? What specific metrics are being used in Bethel Park that aren't being used in other districts that are back full in-person? From PDE guidance, each health and safety plan may also include the following to the extent possible. Protocols for classroom learning space occupancy that allows for six feet of separation among students and staff throughout the day when appropriate. Two important points, to the extent possible and when appropriate, mean that where possible, these guidelines are followed. When it is more important for the children to be back in class with masks on four feet of social distance instead of six feet. How are other school districts going back full-time in PA? Are they all just physically bigger than BP? Ms. Dobos is telling us that we should respect the rule of law. However, it seems that this plan and the metrics used to craft it are very much up to her and others' discretion. Are other districts breaking the law?
Last one does not have an address. Are there any more in?
Rebecca Walker, Senate Back End, addresses 5984 Pudding Stone Lane. Please consider allowing students with an IEP requiring pairs to attend four days in person. It is very difficult for many of these students to participate fully online, even with online pairs.
A couple more.
I'm rebooting and it's taking forever.
Christina Bell, 2810 Poplar Street. My questions are pretty much like Vince's. How are teachers going to teach both remote and online at the same time? Why don't we let every teacher test this out before we go hybrid? We need to figure out a set plan rather than flying by the seat of our pants. What about kids who have been out of state, country? Question. Are we forcing them to quarantine for two weeks before they are allowed in, in the school? Putting the health of teachers and staff and children at risk is completely uncalled for, in my opinion. There has been no discussion of this. Not to share my personal belief on this, but I'm keeping my kids home. Will my kids get to keep the teachers they have already gotten to know? And will they be ignored because they are remote? Teachers do not have eyes everywhere. Thank you.
I think now the last one is Marcia Slizak-Burt, 5851 Bryan Drive. There seems to be a lot of discussion about the elementary school-level students being taught by one teacher in the classroom and online. Can someone please discuss how the upper levels are different than elementary school? At the IMS and high school level, the children are in different level classes and have electives. These teachers have specialties in language, honors, AP, band class, electives, et cetera.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move into our business items then. Mr. McGregor, there are four items. Please take each one of them separately.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so we have four items. The first one is memorandum of agreement with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers.
We're having a hard time hearing you, Mr. McGregor. Can you?
I'm getting, I'm getting feedback.
Darren, are you, try again, Darren.
I'm getting, yeah.
Yeah, somebody else is not muted on the webcast that's open. It's away from the.
Is everyone who's in this meeting muted?
Now you're coming across clear.
Everybody is, okay, now Darren, that's better.
Okay, there are four items. The first one is the MOA with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Nagel. Any discussion on this? This particular MOA follows along, is that me? Feedback?
Whoever's coming on, it sounds like they're having problems.
I have everything off. So, this particular MOA follows along with the plan that was presented by Dr. Jan Sannie and Dr. Alor as to the conditions of the hybrid plan in allowing for synchronous learning four days a week and asynchronous learning one day a week on Fridays with the, with the, so this plan will allow this to occur in its agreement with the teachers' union.
So, so I would like to say first, this plan goes a long way in addressing my concerns.
the, so this plan will allow this to occur in its agreement with the teachers' union.
So, so I would like to say first, this plan goes a long way in addressing my concerns that I had with the last MOU as far as the delivery of education, as well as the feedback to parents and students. They were my two largest concerns in the last MOU, and that's the reason I voted against that. I think it went a long way in addressing those concerns, and I will be voting for this one.
Any other comments about the memorandum? Okay, Mr. McCoslin, will you open up the voting, please?
Voting is open.
I did vote.
Oh, got it, sorry. Eight-one, motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. McGregor, the next one? Okay, this.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, the second item is approval of rate adjustment, where it says the board approves the administration's recommendation to approve an increase in the hourly rate for noontime aide from $8 an hour to $12 an hour.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Nagel. I think we need some explanation of this, about this. I don't know who, Mr. McCoslin or somebody?
Yeah, this is Doug. This really came about because we don't have noontime aides to cover when students come back right now because the rate currently sets at $8 an hour. We really can't attract enough noontime aides, so we're recommending an increase to $12 an hour. The only other solution we had was probably to increase time for instructional aides to cover the lunchtime, but by doing that, we would push them over thirty hours a week and then have to offer benefits. So this seemed to be the more cost-effective solution by raising the rate. It really would cost you about annually $650 more per noontime aide, since they only work about two hours a day to cover the noontime lunch periods. So for us, this seemed like a more cost-effective solution to getting the number of noontime aides you needed to cover the lunch periods. So that's the reason for the recommendation.
You got a little fuzzy at one point. Did you say this is going to cost us $650 a year?
It'll be like $650 per aide per year.
Mr. McCoslin, how many current aides do we have?
I knew you were going to ask me that, and I'm not quite sure the exact number, but I think there are about two or three at each building.
Do we have the elementary principals answer that question? I believe you're all still on.
At Franklin, I certainly have two.
Okay, that is not going to work. All right, let's start with Ms. Dumont first. Sorry.
At Franklin, we have two, two aides that are returning.
I'm going to repeat that. You said you had two noontime aides?
Correct.
So we probably have ten altogether. Okay.
No, no, this is Fred, this is Fred Pearson. We, we have like five per building. Ms. Dumont has two that have, are remaining. I have three that are coming back, but we're still looking for more noontime aides.
Okay, Mr. Chalice, how many do you have at Memorial?
I have three returning and coming back this year, three.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, how many do you have at Lincoln?
We have five positions at Lincoln, four of mine are returning.
And Mr. Linowski, how many do you have at William Penn?
We have four at William Penn, and I have zero.
Okay, we start school on Monday, ladies and gentlemen.
If I'm doing the quick math, it's about $12,350 additional per year.
Okay, so we have, we have not been successful in recruiting noontime aides, and part of the reason is because of our hourly rate is basically what I hear you saying, correct?
That is correct.
That is correct.
Okay.
If, if we were to increase the hours of instructional aides in the short term to fill the need, A, do we have instructional aides who would be willing to do that? And B, would we contractually be obligated to continue to keep them at those hours if we were able to fill the full-time aides in a, as we go?
I don't know that you'd be contractually obligated to continue it, but I wouldn't want to push the hourly, hourly total for the week over thirty hours a week, thus pushing them into a situation where we'd offer, have to offer them benefits as well. Would be an additional $20,000 potentially on top of that. So that's what we're trying to avoid, and we do realize that it's a time crunch, so that may end up being a temporary situation where we have to fill that for a few days with some instructional aides, but we really would like to start recruiting noontime aides at a much, at the higher hourly rate, so we could get those positions filled.
Just for clarity's sake.
Can we offer the position as an EDR? I know, like in the school district I teach in, they recruit teachers for lunch duty, and they offer a semestral stipend. Can we offer something like that to teachers who might want to provide supervision over their lunch?
That's certainly an option as well.
And the teacher's hourly rate to cover lunches and extra duty period, which is $25.
You would probably play that at whatever the ancillary rate in the contract is.
So I just was wondering, I'm sure that there's been a shortage of noontime aides in the past, and so on it, in a specific situation, could somebody tell me what do we do in that situation? Because we probably won't have enough available for Monday.
This is Brian Linowski from William Penn. Usually me that works the resets and the, and the lunch duty, and I try to get help early, but with everybody doing six feet of distancing, what I usually have is pairs watching two kids, and we'll have somebody doing lunch duty, and that won't be able to be done anymore, if you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's my concern, Mr. Linowski. We're telling students they need to eat in the classroom, providing lunches, and I don't know how they're getting from the classroom to the cafeteria and back. They're so young ages, and we don't have noontime aides, and it, it's a large concern. I had heard this earlier in the week. I just didn't know it was as large as it is.
Okay, Mr. McCoslin, will you please put up the vote?
Voting is open.
Okay, Mr. McGregor, number three.
Okay, yeah, the third item is approval of leave of absence for families first act.
Seconded by Mr. Christensen. I don't think we have to discuss this. Just please open the voting.
Voting is open. Motion carries.
And the fourth one?
Okay, the fourth one is the approval of leave of absence.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spicuzzo. Please open the voting.
Voting is open.
Mr. Christensen, the finance items.
Under Finance Committee, we have two items tonight. Should we handle these separately or altogether?
Yes, separately.
Separately, okay. I move to approve the budgetary intra-fund transfer that will transfer $400,000 from the general fund account to the capital reserve account for the 2019-20 school year.
Okay, I need a second. Seconded by Mr. Nagel. And those of us who have been on the board for a while remember the diesel program to reimburse us, but Mr. McCoslin, can you talk to us about this a little bit, the rebate program?
Sure. You had a, as a board, to purchase ten diesel fuel, diesel fuel buses in 2018. There's a grant that was available through the Department of Environmental Protection in 2018 for a $10,000 rebate on each bus, so you had a, you were granted $50,000 through that grant, and that money didn't come until last year, in the 2019 year. When that money was spent, it was originally spent from the capital reserve fund, and those funds, when they came in, were put into the general fund, simply moving those funds from the general fund into the capital reserve fund from where they were spent originally to offset that cost for those buses. This was something the auditor picked up while they were here doing the audit, and I wasn't really aware of until he explained it to me, and so that's the reason for this transfer being on the agenda tonight.
And it would be designated under the capital reserve fund account for purchase of buses?
Yes, it would end up in that same type of fund because it was, it was just pretty off, pretty much offsetting the expenditure that you had in 2018, but you didn't recoup the funds until last school year.
Remember, we had to drill holes in the engines of the old buses?
Right. Now, we don't have to earmark this for school bus replacement. We could, right?
No, you do not. It just, it just ends up in the capital reserve fund, yeah.
Okay. All right, will you open the voting, please? Does that answer everyone's questions? Okay.
Voting is open.
Item number two on the finance agenda. I move to approve the purchase of clear acrylic sheets. This is for a total of $10,440 as protective sheets in the classroom, protective dividers in the classroom.
I need a second. Seconded by Mr. Spicuzzo. Mr. Fierst, would you please come in front of the camera to explain this to us, please?
This is a purchase for 360 acrylic fiberglass, plexiglass sheets that are going to be placed directly in front of teachers' desks for a protective barrier. They'll be attached through wooden blocks, so they're removable.
Okay, any, any further questions of Mr. Fierst? Okay, open the voting, please.
Voting is open.
Mr. Modrak, will you take other, please?
Yes, ma'am. Other, approval of the revised phase school reopening health and safety plan. Move to have it voted on.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Nagel. This is the plan that specifically Dr. Jan Sandy went over. Those of you at home, if you click on the link, you can read it in more detail. It's the change from the plan that we voted on in August or September, August, and it accommodates the MOU that was passed and some of the other aspects that Dr. Jan Sandy talked about regarding distancing and protection. Do you have any further questions to ask of Dr. Jan Sandy? Anybody?
Just to restate, Mrs. Dobos, as we discussed, this is a living document. If things will change, obviously, we can come back, vote again. I'd love to see the kids in the building, especially your kids, sooner as possible. We understand we're following the guidelines provided in county, and maybe some other insight we'll get from other districts as they're moving forward, but we do need to vote on this to get us going, but with the understanding that if things change or we have a different view of it based on some other information, we can come back here and re-vote on this again to get our kids in the building as quickly as possible and as safely as possible. So I just want to restate that again for everybody at home.
Yeah, can I ask Dr. Jan Sandy just one question?
Sure.
I'm not sure I understand the positivity rate correctly, but it's basically the number of tests versus the number, so if there's not a lot of testing, then the number can fluctuate greater. You're, you're exactly right, Mr. Spicuzzo. Basically, if you have a hundred, 100 tests taken, then it's a pretty straight percentage, but the problem is that it deviates from one day to the next. So we are currently in the moderate range, and we're hoping to get into the low range that will enable us to get our students back to school sooner than later. So until, and it's based on a seven-day span of time that puts us in the range. Currently, we're getting close to where that range will drop, and then also, as I mentioned earlier, we're, we're, there's a prediction of a spike, but that's needless to say, we don't know if that really will come to fruition or not. And. Thank you, Dr. Jan Sandy. Just to reiterate, the standards that we're going by when we're making these decisions, they're, I'll let you speak on it. The, the standards that we're going by, Mr. Nagel, are based on Allegheny County numbers, not the Bethel Park numbers. I think if people look at our numbers locally, they're in pretty good shape. However, the, the county is based upon the entire county, as, as you would expect. So right now, once again, we're in the moderate range. In the, in moderate only lets us go to a hybrid or a remote learning if we follow those guidelines. So that's where it is right now. And those guidelines are from the PDE, correct? They're from the, they're from the Allegheny County Health Department, in, in conjunction with the Pennsylvania Health Department and PDE. So, so just to be clear, the PDE set the guidelines, but we go by the Allegheny County numbers, or? Yes, exactly right, what you just said. It's PDE, and then the Allegheny County numbers are presented accordingly. And the school districts in Allegheny County that have returned full-time have elected not to follow those guidelines? I can't comment on other districts. All I can tell you is that we are compelled to follow the regs, and that's what we are doing in keeping the integrity with health and safety for our students.
I think this came up in one of the public comments tonight. Do we have a link to these metrics and to the current dashboards, you know, like from the Allegheny County? Do we have those on our website, on the homepage?
It was part, it was on the front page was the, the CDC, Allegheny County Department of Health, and the Pennsylvania Department of Ed. If you click on those links, it takes you right to the COVID page.
Okay, I just want to make sure they're on our homepage for our website.
Yeah, they're also on the COVID page of the, on the website as well.
Okay.
Okay, will you open?
Could I, could I, I just want to say something. Could I speak?
Uh huh, sure.
Okay. I just wanted to tell community and the staff that.
Mr. Scalzo, we're having trouble hearing you. There's some feedback going on. Have you turned? Somebody, is somebody, somebody needs to turn off microphones and so forth, so we can hear Mr. Scalzo. He's talking about other, which we haven't, we haven't voted on.
We have not voted, right?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
No.
The health and safety, okay, we can hear you now.
I'm just making a comment, really, and I'm just wanting, wanting to tell the community and the staff, if there are issues with technology or learning, or if there's a sense of the districts, you know, not prepared enough, or if you sense that there's not enough communication or some type of dysfunction as we move into hybrid, please, you know, I'm reinforcing that you make those concerns known immediately. And I would start with the chain of command, obviously. I would obviously start with your building principals. If you get feedback from them, if, for whatever reason you're not satisfied, continue to work up the chain until you get to us, and we will definitely be listening, and we will be watching very closely this upcoming week to see how this all plays out. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McCoslin, will you open the voting, please?
Motion carries.
Okay, at this time, we have a few more public comments. Before we go to read them, I do want to let the public know that our public comment venue is scheduled to be changed for the next two public meetings, and it will be more of a document that you log into and fill out your comments. So instead of the public comments, there'll be a different link, so watch for that for our next meeting, October 20th and October 27th. So the next one is from?
Ginger Fuller, 307 Rotten Road. When you talk about children having just one teacher, are you talking about elementary school or all grades, including high school? Also, BP should be allowing kids with IEPs to attend full-time as other districts have done, so that proper support is provided.
Sharon, Sharon Janicek, 5314 Anna Street. Good evening. Thank you for all your unending work on behalf of the children of our community. First, I am able to observe what is happening in districts all over the region, the state, and the country. The difficulties we are having are the same difficulties that every single district is having, even the districts many people cite as having no problems or doing this right. These same problems and concerns are occurring in every single district everywhere, despite what it might look like from the outside. Second, the reason this is true is because our public school system is not set up to do what it's being asked to do. Every single solution to every single problem creates additional difficulties for others. That is why it is so hard. Yes, it is true that it's difficult to ask teachers to teach students at home and at school. Yes, it's better to not change teachers, and yes, it might be better to have remote teachers teaching remote students, but it's not possible to do the right thing for all of those very real concerns at the same time. It's just not, and that's true regardless of how much planning goes on. Lastly, school has to happen, and there is absolutely no way that it will happen in a form that meets everyone's needs. That is simply not possible. It's not, it's just not. I'm grateful that we are working towards some type of live instruction with whichever of our teachers we get, both in person and full remote. This is teaching my children that what we'd like to have isn't always possible, that we all have to do our best, that we can all do hard things, that education is important enough to keep going, and that everyone is doing the absolute best they can, they can, given the circumstances. We can and will recover from this, but we can't do that if all we do is attack, degrade, demand, and argue. Nothing about this year is comfortable or reassuring, or what we'd choose or prefer, but the year is happening regardless, and I'm eternally grateful for the opportunities we have in Bethel Park, which are not always available in other districts. Thank you for your work, and thank you for continuing to row our increasingly heavy ship towards the shore. Please stay safe and well, and do not give up. Thank you for your dedication. And that's it that I see for the public comments, so at this time, we'll entertain board comments if anyone would like to make any comments.
Mrs. Dovis?
Go ahead.
I would just like to report on Still Center and.
Please.
Yeah, you, Still Center has gone into full motion operation. They have also hired a, a mental health behavioral individual to come on staff. They've also hired a nurse and also a security individual, so they're getting all staffed up to parallel, you know, the public schools themselves. Haven't seen much of a decrease in our students, which is a good thing, and so everything else is proceeding ahead as they had planned, so that's working out. The other thing is on the AIU, some of you may be familiar with their waterfront learning, which was an issue years ago, but has come a long way, to the fact that during this pandemic, that they have been called in to assist other AIU unit, and also they have been responsible for getting online learning to over 15,000 elementary students and over 9,000 high school students, and that was a record for them. So I think that they've had a big team together and worked very well, were able to assist many of our schools who were not prepared with online learning or the devices to carry it out. So that's a good report for them. That's it, Mrs. Dovis.
Thank you very much for, especially for serving on both those boards. Appreciate that. Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to just reiterate what I said last week and what I've said a little bit of today. This is an unprecedented time. There are a lot of challenges. There are a lot of people working really hard to try to provide the best education in a safe and effective manner to our children, our staff, our teachers. Everybody's going to be working hard. There are going to be bumps. This isn't the way we normally do things, so there are definitely going to be bumps in the road. And I want to reiterate to the parents and caregivers out there how much I appreciate all of you. I've seen my wife doing it. I've tried to help out a little bit when I've been home, but my wife's the primary one doing it, and more than anybody, I'd say the parents and caregivers have faced challenges that are not in most of their wheelhouses. This isn't anything like, most of our parents and caregivers don't have the educational background to provide instruction or assist with instruction the way they have. They've really stepped up. With the hybrid process, just remind your children to do the best with the situation, just like with the online process. Perfection isn't going to come for any of us, as long as everybody's giving their best, just like I told my children, as long as everybody's putting their best effort forward, that's what, that's what we should be asking of everybody, and thank you for everybody who is putting their best effort forward. I do want to say, I was very frustrated, as many of the parents were, that these plans were so late in coming to us. Once they did come to us, though, I am pleased that they address a lot of the concerns that we've heard, and I'm looking forward to getting the kids into the schools. With that said, please start working on the full return now so that we have that in a more timely manner, so that our, our parents and caregivers and students can prepare a little more in advance. But I do want to reiterate, thank you, and I'm excited to see our kids get into the classroom.
I'll go next. I agree with Mr. Nagel. I would ask for a couple of things. Patience with teachers next week. They are amazing individuals every day of the week, K through 12, that work here. I know a lot of them, as I have one that's in an older grade and one that's in a younger grade. These people are amazing, as you know, I am, I am proud to say that I am the Bethel Park graduate. These teachers are amazing, but please, we need patience next week. We also need to know when things aren't working. We need you to, and it's not the teachers' fault. The teachers can't, can only do what's in their classroom in their wheelhouse. We need you to email your principals. We need you to email Dr. Owork and Dr. Jan Sannity so we know immediately what the problems are and how to solve them, because next week, as a board member, I will be puck on top of this situation, because as I said before, I do have some concerns. But patience, 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 and as a parent who was dealing with one student this morning at a building, and my husband had to log on with our elementary school student this morning, his comment to me was, "I teach online education," and this was harder than teaching online education this morning.
Other comments? Anyone?
Yeah, I would like to say, this is Darren, I would like to say, with the beginning of any year, transportation may have some problems. If you have any problems with transportation, call Mr. Scott at 854-8414. He's been wonderful. Sorry to put you up there, Mr. Zeiler. He's, he's been wonderful all these years, like there's, like there have been bus subs that miss my kid in years past, and when I call that number, he answers right away, and a bus comes back and picks up the kid. So be patient with that. There's always going to be some, some bumps, but yeah, 854-8414, and.
What was that number again, Darren?
Is that a 412 area code?
412, right.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's 412, 854-8414. Yeah, so call that number. He'll get back to you right away if he doesn't answer, and, and good luck next week to the board, the administration, the teachers, the parents, the staff, and most importantly, the kids.
I'd like to say something to the grandparents out there. You're in my circle. I just want to say.
And the grandkids.
As a former associate professor, I am struggling with sixth grade, so please don't feel like you're not qualified or that you just aren't with it. Believe me, you're not alone. Just hang in there.
Any other comments from anyone? Okay, Dr. Demperio?
Thank you, Mrs. Dovis. On behalf of the administrators, the entire staff, I'd like to thank the board for their support. I know this was a difficult vote, both on the safety plan and the plan to move forward, and a lot of comments were made that I guess challenged what we were doing, and so to get your support through all of that means the world to us. We, too, the residents of Bethel Park, those of you who send forward those very kind remarks, I can't tell you how much they are appreciated and how hard we're working to provide the best possible program. For those of you who questioned what we're doing in many ways, you need to know that we are professionals. We take everything that you say to heart. It folds into our professional planning, and we'll do the best to meet your needs as well as all of the other needs of the children of the district. So again, on behalf of the staff, we thank you for all of your remarks to the public this evening, and I thank the board again for making this occur, and we'll be working very, very hard, starting, and when I say starting tomorrow, there may have been a misunderstanding. That is not the beginning of our planning tomorrow morning. It's just to review and refine what we've already been working on with administrative staff and teachers for weeks. So again, thank you so much, and we'll continue working for the betterment of the children in the Bethel Park School District.
Thank you. I don't see any more comments, if anybody has refreshed lately.
Move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. I need a second, Mrs., moved by Mr. Nagel and seconded by Mr. Rule. And Mr. McCoslin, will you open the voting?
Our voting is open. Motion.
Okay, thank you. Are we out? I don't know. Mating's down, and the camera should go off, too.
God, we have Mickey Mouse ears pretty soon.
Yeah. I should have taken a P3.